Alderman Knight.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Pizik.
Here.
Alderman Shocky.
Here.
Alderman Suback.
Here.
Alderman Talley. Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Corn being present, would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 1, 2007? Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bills, Alderman Winger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve a list of bills dated February 15, 2007, for $720,922.65.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Alderman Shocky?
I believe I just had one on page one, the second item, American Administrative Group. What is flex spending?
Mr. Williams?
That's the fee we pay for administering our flexible spending program. That is part of the insurance program wherein you declare X amount that you're going to pay for medical services that are not covered by insurance, and that comes, you declare that, and that comes off your taxes. It's a flexible spending plan. It's part of our program.
Okay. One quick other one, too. Page two. I'm just kind of curious, is that the name of the company? Cheaper Than Dirt? It's a little over halfway down.
That is an actual name that comes out of the police department, and that's a place that specializes where we get a lot of our magazines for our surplus, for our weapons.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Suback?
Yes.
Alderman Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Pizik?
Yes.
Alderman Shocky?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
That passes. Do any citizens wish to address the City Council this evening? If so, if you go to the podium, give us your name and address, please. Hearing none, I do have one written communique from the DuPage County Farm Bureau. Dear Mayor Johnson, on behalf of the DuPage County Farm Bureau and the Farm Bureau Women's Committee, I want to thank you once again for helping make our 2007 National Food Checkout Day promotion a big success. After the dust settled and the contestants caught their breath, the results were quite remarkable. A total of 1,219 food items valued at a record $3,610.59 were collected and donated to the local food pantries in Addison, which would be the Community Switchboard, and in Wooddale at the Wooddale Food Pantry. To ensure that each community would benefit equally from the impressive efforts of the contestants, a check for $775.41 was presented by the DuPage County Farm Bureau to the Addison Switchboard Food Pantry to purchase additional food. We are pleased to be able to hold this special event each year in a selected DuPage County community. We hope this year's rematch was even more enjoyable and educational for you the second time around. Your kind cooperation and support are what made this event a tremendous success. Thank you again for your enthusiastic participation. Sincerely, Michael Ashby, General Manager of the DuPage County Farm Bureau.
Can you tell us who won, Mr. Mayor?
I noticed they didn't put that in the letter, but I happen to have the results here. Lucille Zaccaro, City Clerk of Addison, collected 501 items. I have a different figure, worth $1,417.59, and the mayor of the city of Wooddale collected 718 items for $2,193 to the Wooddale Food Pantry. It was a fun event. And they have retired me undefeated and moved on to two other communities next year. And I do not have anything additional under Mayor's report, other than I'm in a receipt of a request from the Wooddale Historical Society, which I will pass on to the city manager, asking for $5,000 in funding consideration when we do the budget this year. Mr. Manager?
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
That brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any objections to any items on the consent agenda? Alderman Knight?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to see number, item six, removed, please.
Item six will be deleted. Any other objections? May I have a motion to approve the agenda, beating items one through five? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now may I have a motion to approve the items on the agenda, being Topgolf USA Fee Reduction, number two, approval of an order for three squad cars from the state-sponsored replacement program for fiscal year 2007, 2008, approval of a contract for chemical pump sales for chlorine equipment, four, approval of a contract to Kluber, Skehan, and Associates, excuse me, for architectural services at the Public Works Building, and five, approval of a contract to Baxter Woodman for conceptual engineering plans for the wastewater treatment plant. Is there such a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Suback?
Yes.
Alderman Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Pizik?
Yes.
Alderman Shocky?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Those items are approved. That brings us to committee chairman reports, Community Economic Development. Alderman Suback? Are you vice chair, or is that?
No.
I'm sorry, who is vice chair? Alderman Winger?
Community and Economic Development, I am not vice chair.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think I am. No report, Mayor.
The chairman has just walked in.
I'm waiting for the chairman to walk in.
Any report from Community and Economic Development?
No report.
Thank you, Dave.
You're all right, Dave.
That was excellent timing. Finance Administration, Alderman Winger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to make a motion in the affirmative, although I would like to, I do have questions when you call the question. I make a motion to approve an ordinance amending Chapter Seven of the Municipal Code of the City of Wooddale regarding delinquencies and payment of water or sanitary sewer bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, Alderman Winger?
Thank you. I'm reviewing the example for the first time this evening, so if I'm interpreting it incorrectly, please let me know. But the way it looks to me is that it, I know that some residents probably hold their bills before they send them out, a few days before they're due, and if in fact the resident did send out that bill late, or left for vacation and forgot, the way this appears is that they're going to get that shut off that following month, the shut-off notice the following month on the first, and then the second notice five days later. So potentially their water could be shut off a month after they haven't, like less than a month after the due date of their first bill. And it concerns me, and I'd like to see that one more cycle, and then potentially do the shut-off policy. But the interval is too short for me. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
That's, I don't think that's correct as far as the schedule here. Maybe you're interpreting it wrong. The resident would have 51 days to pay, so they'd go through the first cycle, they'd get the late notice right after the first cycle, then they'd get another late notice five days after the first cycle, and then they'd have to the, after the next cycle to pay. So they have two cycles to pay before they would get anything shut off, not just one cycle, two cycles.
I'm not, the example doesn't depict that.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Suback?
When we were doing the bills in-house, if you forgot a month, I don't think additional notice was sent. It was just on the next bill, it said, previous balance, 80 bucks, current balance, you know, 79, total month due, the total. Now that we've gone off-site for the billing, do they send an additional notice between the next bill, or is, I thought the next bill is the first notice?
Mr. Mayor?
Can you, can you repeat that? I'm not clear on what you're asking.
When we did the billing for water billing in-house, we'd get the little postcard, say what was going on at the Historical Society, come to the Halloween party, whatever we're doing, and type, and it would say, current water bill, $82, or $80. If I didn't pay that bill, my next water, I wouldn't get any notices from Wooddale, at all. I would just, on my next bill, it'd come out the same time of the month, it would show previous amount due, $80, and current amount due, and it would have in there language about if you don't pay this bill, that we're going to shut your water off. So I think what Alderman Winger's raising is that, are we sending a separate notice in between those two bills? Because we didn't when it was in-house billing. Is it different now that we have an outside service?
I believe the Finance Department Director has the discretion to send out that notice.
Well, I can't think how we're watching the bills that closely that we're able, I mean, it's physically impossible. There's too many of them that we're sending a second notice out. I think it's, you get your bill, you don't pay it, and, you know, and then the next bill says the notice on it.
Mr. Williams?
The procedure, we're really not shortening it to that great extent. It's the same procedure that we had before. The only thing we're adding here is we're updating the fine structure and tidying it up a little bit. They'll have the same period that they had almost before, except I think it was 60 days, now it's down to 51 days total.
No, actually, the days haven't changed at all. There's, there's three reasons why we changed the code, and I can go over the three reasons. I apologize, it's, it's not in the, it's not in the action item sheet. The first reason was to raise the fees from 50 to 75 if you did get your water shut off and you had to turn it back on. The reason we proposed this is just, that's what other municipalities in the area are doing this, the current fee. It hasn't been updated in a while. The second reason was to create similar, similar language between Section 7.204 and 7.418, because there were some discrepancies. It said the same thing, but it was difficult to read, so we tried to clear that up. The third reason we made changes to the code was to add in that section on the, you couldn't have any utility shut off if your balance was under $100. The reason we wanted to do this was to protect the residents that may have just forgot to pay their bill for a month, and, you know, we wanted to separate them from the repeat offenders, or the, you know, the high bill that a multiple offense would have. So those are the only three changes that were made. No change was made to the schedule as far as, as late payments and shut offs and anything like that.
Alderman Suback?
Again, just to reiterate, though, I don't, I think we should be clear on what the procedures are for the notices, because I don't think we have a separate system that sends a notice out to the homeowner, that it's the bill, and then the next notice you get is the next bill. I don't think there's an interim letter in between.
Mr. Williams?
They even make an attempt, and they put a doorknob hanger on there as a notice in addition to the one they send out. This is a standard procedure. We did research the surrounding communities to make sure that we, that we're doing everything in line with how everyone else is, and we, when we updated this. This is the same procedure every community does follow, and we make every effort and take into account that, for example, a person might be on vacation. This basically is to just allow us to continue to collect the water bills and get the monies into our treasury.
Anything further? Alderman Shocky?
The way I read this, though, Jeff, is that they receive the bill on the first, they're supposed to pay it on the 21st, and then they just have 14 days, or else they get their water shut off. And nine in the five is 14 days later, two weeks later, and then the last thing you have on here is the 21st of the month, due date for all bills, it's, it doesn't make any difference. We're saying the 21st it's paid by, and if it's not paid within 14 days of the 21st, we're shutting off your water. They're being told the water's going to be shut off.
Mr. Bond?
That's the way this reads.
And maybe the example is not as clear. If you look at, it's the next, the first of the next month, so as Jeff indicated, what you would have is your initial delinquency of that 21 days, and then the, the balance of those other delinquencies, an additional 21-day period for the next month. So you've got those two periods adding up, so the total's going to be 51 days prior to your water being shut off, and there is notice provided for, within that timeframe. So you're still going to have that, that 51-day timeframe between your, the charges and your non-payment.
Alderman Suback?
Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, if the 51 days passes, it still takes your department some amount of time, because you're not standing outside the door waiting. Notice would go from the Finance Department to Public Works, and you guys work at a good schedule, but you can only get out there so quickly to actually put the door knocker on and go shut the water off?
The current volume of shut offs that we were doing, which, that's another thing we're trying to step up our efforts, the current volume of shut offs that we were doing enabled us to not have that long a delay. When we got it from Finance, we were out there, then within the next day or two. As, you know, if, I would all hope, we all hope that we don't have to step up our efforts, but if we have a great number of shut offs, then yes, it may take us longer to do those shut offs.
But you guys are the ones who are going out there and hanging the door knocker?
We hang the door, the door, the door hangers.
So it's 51 days, then even two or three days for you guys to get out there?
Exactly.
And then how many days after that does it take for you to get out there and actually crank it off?
Again, we don't go crank it off until it's gone back cycle through, through Finance, and Finance lets us know when we can go out and shut it off.
Okay.
Alderman Shocky?
Just to clarify it then, they're getting a shut-off notice on the first of next month, a second shut-off notice on the fifth day of next month, just four days later, and when does the Finance Department tell you to shut it off? That's what I'd like to know from Jeff. That's, the way this reads here, it looks like it's done right after that second shut-off notice.
No, they'd, they'd still have a chance to pay after the 21st of the next month.
They won't have it, so what you should have on here, then, is shut off would occur sometime after the 21st of that following month.
I apologize for that once again. I, I have 51 total days to pay. I should have probably added that extra sentence to make it more clear.
Okay, just so we understand. Thank you.
Alderman Talley?
Yeah. I'm going to confuse you more. Bottom line, you don't pay in two months, you're going to get the, you're going to get the notice, you guys are going to go out, so it's basically the third month, into the third month already that the water's running before it's going to be turned off, right?
And again, we didn't, we didn't change anything to what it was previously.
I understand it, but that's, that's really what it comes down to, right?
Unless you have under $100 balance.
Right, but in essence, what that could mean is that you could be up to almost 90 days before you really, because if you're into the third cycle already, before you're going out and putting the water, you could be up until the 90, well, 70 to 80-day limit, right, before we would actually do it.
I don't work in the finance, I'm not an expert on the billing down there.
Yeah, no, but Gary's shaking his head back there, and, you know, I'm just trying to make it, you know, so that people understand. Two months, you get two months. If you don't pay it in two months, in the third month, you're going to get that final, they're turning off in the third month, they're going to be coming out and shutting your water off.
That's correct.
Okay.
Alderman Suback?
And Jeff, I understand your concern, saying, hey, we're not changing the dates, but we are hearing from Finance and from Gary that they're going to try to step these up, so that we're going to hear back from the residents when this gets stepped up of, how come it's only 51 days? That's why we're just going through this tedious exercise and making sure we understand how much time they're going to have.
Yeah, I understand.
Even though we're not changing it, it hasn't been enforced, is the reality, this quickly before, and now it looks like we're going to make that attempt, and so we just want to make sure about the numbers.
Anything further on the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Suback?
Yes.
Alderman Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Pizik?
Yes.
Alderman Shocky?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Talley?
Yes.
That passes ordinance 0-07-07. Does it include your report? Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Public Health Safety and Judiciary, Alderman Pizik?
I'll report.
Planning zoning and building, Alderman Knight?
First item is a report and recommendation, case number 06SU9, Genuine Auto Parts Company, doing business is Napa Auto Parts, 372 West Irving Park Road. I make a motion to approve a request for a special use permit with lot consolidation for the construction and use of a 6,000 square feet facility and auto parts store at 372 West Irving Park Road, and to direct the city attorney to draw up the appropriate ordinance subject to one. Final review and approval of all engineering by the city engineers. Two, the structure to be built with the materials and design as proposed in the drawings dated October 23, 2006. Three, that amountable right-in, right-out pork chop be used on the Irving Park ingress, egress. Four, that any delivery vehicle be 50 feet or less. Five, a six-foot wooden fence will be used to provide a buffer to the residential property. Six, delivery times are to be restricted to between 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. And seven, the enhanced landscaping plan will be included.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
On the question?
Alderman Suback?
I just want the attorney to make sure, number one, when we are incorporating the materials and design, that included the color, which the petitioner agreed to, and also because this is a special use permit, we're trying to, one of our big concerns at committee level was the amount of traffic, and if you could briefly explain to the council that when we're granting the special use permit, because they've agreed that all deliveries on this one large truck will be only once a day, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., if after the attorney walks out of here and they build this building, and in three years, they're doing deliveries twice a day, and it's an 80-foot truck, and it's at rush hour in the afternoon and rush hour in the morning, that we could actually go through a procedure to revoke their special use permit, and then Napa would no longer be able to operate in that area?
Mr. Bond?
That's correct. The special use permit would actually be conditions upon which they are allowed to use that in exception to your code, and if they violate that, they, they're entitled to due process, but there's a procedure for the city to revoke that under your current code, where they, they provide evidence that they've not violated it, and if you make a determination thereafter that, in fact, they are in violation of those conditions, and that's why it's important to make sure those are in the ordinance, then you can revoke that special use permit.
And then two follow-up questions. One, does that run with successors of the owners of land that Napa sells, and they're with somebody else? Can we hold the next owner of the property to those standards, number one? And then number two, if this wasn't a special use permit, it was a standard B2, could we say that, and they didn't need any variance, as my understanding is, they wouldn't be before the City Council, and if they wanted to have six semis a day making deliveries at rush hour, we couldn't stop them?
In answer to your first question, this, the special use permit would run with the land. In other words, it applies to that particular parcel regardless of who the owner is, so it would be enforceable against any future or successor owners of that property. And with respect to the second question, if they did not need a special use permit, the special use permit gives you as the council an opportunity to impose certain conditions and restrictions. If they were able to do this under the straight B2, you would not be able to impose the restrictions, frankly, any of the restrictions that have been made part of or condition of the special use being granted. They would be allowed to have as many trucks as they could fit in there and move through and so forth. So yes, it is more restrictive, and the reason you have the ability or the legal authority to impose a more restrictive conditions is because they are seeking a special use for that parcel.
Alderman Shocky?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about stories, if I may. When I was, my children were small, I used to tell them stories at bedtime, and it was for enjoyment, for pleasure. We've been hearing different stories here, and I went back into the computer and watched the programs, watched the meetings, and we were told initially that this small pork chop definitely would be large enough to handle the large truck that would be coming in to this site. I'm forgetting about how it's going to look now with the narrow part in the front and the long in the back. I mean, we're looking at the side of the building rather than the front of it, but we were told very clearly that the truck could make this pork chop entrance and go down and deliver their goods, and they'd have to wind them around the back of the truck all the way around to the entrance, and then back the truck up all the way past the parking, and then pull out, and that it would fit with no difficulty. We were told that. Now, we were told that a number of times. Then at the last meeting, somebody said, could you give us a visual showing that this would happen? When we were talking about a visual, we were talking about maybe taking a videotape of a pork chop someplace with a truck backing up or something like that, but we got, we got another chart, is what we got. Now, this chart is showing that the pork chop is going to be more than 2/3 of the footage of the front of this property. 2/3. You can put your pen down there and measure the width of the pork chop, and then put it down by the borderline. It's more than 2/3 the width of the property. Not only that, the story has changed now, in that the truck cannot pull in on the street or on the paved part of it, but would have to travel over the pork chop to be able to pull in, and then when it's pulling out, will back up and again have to travel over the pork chop to get out, so we need a pork chop now of two inches instead of a normal curb size with grass in it. I like stories, but I don't like it when the stories continue to change, and we're told one thing, and then we're told something else, and then we're told something else again. What's to stop cars from going over that two-inch pork chop? To me, it, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't follow from one time to the next time. If you had come in and asked for this right off the bat, and in my terms, been honest about it, I probably would have thought about it. But after coming in with one way of doing it and saying outright, boy, that'll work good, the trucks can pull in, and now you're saying, well, we need a much bigger pork chop, probably twice as wide, taking up most of the frontage, and the trucks will have to go over the pork chop. I can't vote for something like that. I really can't, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Alderman Winger?
Thank you. First, I want clarification, and then I do have a question. The restriction from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., I just want to make sure of the terminology of our ordinance. We're saying that deliveries can only, only be made from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.? Or the reverse? It's, okay.
Mr. Bond?
Delivery times are restricted to between 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m.
Meaning that a delivery can only be made during those times?
Correct.
9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And secondly, with the pork chop turning in, the right-in, right-out, can someone refresh me on why we cannot make a left when you're going west on Irving? So the pork chop would only, would take a left turn, and then it would allow rights going down east? Because I think that that would solve the issue of any delivery truck coming from the east going west, that, how do you get back to your shop? You have to go, you know, I'd like to know how, how you plan on getting into your shop if you can only go right in and right out. So the question would be, can we make the left if you're coming, if you're going west on Irving?
Petitioner, do you want to respond to that, or you want to have Mr. Holm respond to that?
I'm Scott Gendell, I'm the chairman of Terraco. With respect to the question regarding the right-in, right-out, it was, this board's determination that a right-in, right-out was warranted. Had we gone in for something other than a special use, there would be no restrictive movements relative to left-in or left-out, but I think that your staff and your board has determined that the right-in, right-out is a safer movement for cars, and if they have to go a block out of their way and go back the other direction, or if, you know, they bypass this location as a result of it, on balance, that's a better circumstance than moving traffic westbound on Irving Park, or having them turn across traffic from a westbound lane into the lot itself. I believe that the curb, I don't know where you got the two-inch measurement on the curb, but I, I, not an engineer, but I don't believe that that curb is any less than four inches, and I can verify that with a call to the engineer, but I don't know where you got the two-inch measurement on the pork chop. I believe that it's four inches. Thank you.
Alderman Wesley?[1733.85]
What is going to be the procedures that they, if they violated from nine to three delivery, how is that going to break down, that we say, "You're no longer welcome in the," how many chances are we giving them? What is going to be the breakdown of the procedure? What's going to be the first violation? What's going to be the second? How many violations are we going to give them? I wanna know that.
Mr. Bond?
Well, that's going to be, excuse me, a determination that you will make based upon the, if they violate those conditions, then that will come before you for a determination as to whether or not they have in fact violated those conditions, and if so, what additional restrictions are you going to impose, or are you going to revoke the special use permit? So.
So that should be included in the ordinance, and we need to discuss that first before we put in ordinance. Because I would think that we should. Why should we go ahead and allow him to go, and then all of a sudden, the board changes and everything, they could violate it three times, and we don't have anything in place? That should be in place before this vote is taken tonight.
Mr. Bond?
You've already got a provision in your ordinance, in the event that a special use is violated. There's already a procedure set forth in the, in your city code.
But how many times is that in the code, that they could violate it before we take action on it? That's my question I have here.
And that's a determin, there is not a set number in your code. It's a determination that's made based on the totality of the circumstances, and the nature of the infraction, and what if, any other conditions that you would impose in order to enforce the terms and conditions of the special use. But there is not a number, because obviously, if someone's there at three-oh-five, or at, at, yeah, three-oh-five, is that as egregious as having multiple deliveries at four o'clock and on a consistent basis? So you, you can't predetermine what the nature of those violations may be. That's something that you would have to address if and when there are violations to the special use.
But again, that does not give them, that's still, that they could keep doing violations, and will never be able to enforce it. It's the same thing with the, the gas station across the street there. They make illegal turns all the time. We didn't do that to the gas station violate that. I mean, the problem here is, I cannot do that unless we have something in writing on the procedure, that they could do it ninety times then, and nothing's going to happen to them. That is not fair.
I think Mr. Bond's comment, it's up to us to initiate the proceedings.
Well, that should be done now, then.
Alderman Talmage?
Yeah, two things. First off, I'd like to address Alderman Wesley's concern, and I think that is an issue that we have to address, but I think because it's already in our code, it's an issue that we should take up as a separate matter. And the reason I say that is because there are other vari, there are other instances already in place that we would have to make, if you're gonna make a rule or a law, you have to make sure that all, we can, we can do this to all of them that are gonna be impacted. And I'll be honest with you, I don't know how many special variances or, you know, types like this that we have, you know, so there, if there's ten, then we have to be able to come up with something that's gonna affect all ten of them the same. I agree, I mean, there should be. We need to have something as far as, you know, how many instances before we initiate,